Little baby.
Okay, with special meaning to the county council, November twenty first, twenty twenty three, now in session, please rise and pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic which stands for one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Anne.
Okay, we're back.
Councilmember Frank.
Here.
Harris.
Here.
Nancy.
Here.
Morris. Roni.
Here.
Sauer.
Yeah.
Walker. Wallace.
Here.
President Pedro. Four in person.
I have an introduction. All those in charge of please to the back by sitting down. I have. I have a introduction a second to approve the budget for the year and for some of the.
Thank you for telling me about the BEA meetings. I'm very proud of seeing one more difficult to understand the detail implies in the budget. If I had not been able to hear the departments, I'm here at the delivery and principal of the EA. And I hope that going forward, in the future, when the budget is presented to the council, that it's being presented with a true presentation right now. This is the hard things that the Congress discussed, these are things we can do because the worries are in the. In the very process, a lot of work will need to be, um, difficult decision to make. And I think it will be beneficial for the council because most of the members tell us that the BEA meetings, that should get the. This definitely, this is the most part, how much attend the BEA meetings, and I think. Uh, for any of you wanting to have a good grasp of everything that's in the, that's my process. With this, elements in the budget, I brought this up last week, I'm gonna mention it again. I am personally, um, a very major supporter of the U department. Um, I find concerned that that will be increasing the cost of the program. It won't have been controlled unless the rescue has been arrested. The potential stability of that program, uh, going forward, um, may be problematic. And I suppose that, uh, is supportive that there can be a discussion between the department, the presidency, and the city. Around establishing a stable revenue thing for supporting children who are not from the city, which would include potentially talking to the county. Talking to the stewardess, uh, looking to other sources for revenue, the goal is not to turn any child in either way. But to ensure the stability on the cost of the future of problems, I think, or I think all the moving of time. And I would expect them to expand, and so therefore we need to think about the future. So that's my comment on the new project. Uh, something I also mentioned in other discussions, I think I may have mentioned it last year, last week. Um. Perhaps more from, um, recycling. Because flowers are going to be hard as well recycling. Uh, we, the current situation, we get around really long into the actual costs. Uh, typically, she's got a number of, it's a hundred and six thousand, the merit card is a hundred and thirty thousand. So we have two hundred and seventy six thousand in the past and a hundred and fifty. That's what's supporting itself, there are options for members of the people that is concerned to deal with this. And again, I think it's something where we need to take a look at, take a look at potentially increasing the cost of the, of the cars. Potentially instituting before, uh, recycling. The transfer station instituted a couple years ago, you could have tied now fifteen dollars to do recycling, it used to be great. I think that's something that we need to think about. All right, complete the issues with the doctor, it's making sure that not only is it impacting lowering the rates. And one thing that we can do and look at is get a dimension of the D P dot E hours to, uh, where we already have to give our usage to play. So we get some estimate, whether it's predominantly lowering from, uh, areas of the city. And also the name of the new district that's in the law. So also, I don't know, we're lowering from areas that I think that's a problem, that we need to look at the challenges to build. And importantly, that there is stuff for these things. Uh, the last thing, though, we have to reach, is not in dollar. Um, it would be impossible to know that it's still a budget if you have not left the M E S. It is a change of raise for all elected officials. It's being acted for, it's to be consistent, uh, considering that this is getting approved of the raise. Uh, the only dollar one associated with this is nothing but a C R, it's not a big thing. But in the first, uh, a lot of positions are not as many as employees. And I would confirm system that is actually involved. Not why people vote to say whether or not elected officials should get a raise, not vote to be part of the board, which is raised. For the, for the, for the, not for people voting for the raise. And that's why we thought a lot of the public knows that that's in the market. And again, I think that's a very small amount of money, it's not that much, it's about a thousand dollars and half a dollar, whatever it's gonna be. So this is in the big dollar amount, it's a matter of tasks. So those are four points, and that's it.
Thanks. Glad to see that. The need is, um, developing and, um, committee and, uh, the Republicans did an amazing job putting all this together. Um, it was a wonderful presidency and, um, it was actually maybe a dreadful meeting and it was very nice of you. And, um, in the process of the B E A, they're doing a fantastic job. Uh, but it's, you know, last, it's rates out to two or three markets. And it's for more funding, uh, from the copy. Um, and definitely from where you're all from. And, um, public aspects of doing things has more increase to the law to benefit our finances. And lastly, I think, um, next year it would be nice if we have a finance committee, so, thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, well done, please.
Councilmember Anthony.
Hi.
That's the lady. Hi. Brett.
Hi.
Harris.
Hi.
Nancy.
Hi.
Morris.
Hi.
Roni.
Hi.
Sauer.
Hi.
Wallace.
Hi.
President Pedro.
Hi.
Carrie.
Okay, can I get a motion second to adjourn this meeting? Juan and Margaret, our supporters have been high.
Hi.
And we turn right away into our next meeting.
Um, before we proceed, uh, because the internet is, I mean, not very stable. For right now, if you are on internet in this room, if you can, please use the City Hall upstairs network. Um, that should.
Do you want to?
Maybe we just want out for us. They just, they prefer to see it as public. Um, it's about like hoping for this, that it's.
You age, probably.
See this public or see City Hall upstairs.
I don't know, I don't know.
Yeah. Hey, Mr. Reddick, meeting from November twenty first, going from the three down session. Nothing for you to do, pledge again, with a perfect, please call the roll, thank you, please.
Councilmember Anthony. That's the lady. Yeah. Brett.
Here.
Harris.
Here.
Nancy.
Yeah.
Morris.
I'm glad she didn't.
Roni.
Yeah.
Sauer.
Yeah.
Walker. Wallace.
Here.
President Pedro.
Here.
Councilmember Morris. Four in person.
I have an introduction a second to the Spencer reading of minutes for, uh, ten and seventeen and place them on file. Watermark. Good heat. All those in favor, signify by saying hi. Uh, I want to pose. Motion times. In portions. One lady to the execution. Please. Thank you. Thank you. And I have an introduction a second to receive the communication. Juan. All those in favor, please signify by saying hi. I'm opposed. Motion times. Um. Phils, Marco. Juan. Now, wait a second. Um. First.
We have passing.
On the judge, that's should mostly be fine.
Okay.
That's it, uh. Council.
The next.
Um. You just told me that the level of, oh, it's the, um, the kiosk system, it can be named. What was the other name?
Amano McGee.
Amano McGee. Anything else? Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Anthony.
Hi.
That's the lady. Hi. Brett.
Hi.
Harris.
Hi.
Nancy.
Hi.
Morris.
Hi.
Roni.
Hi.
Sauer.
Hi.
Wallace.
Hi.
President Pedro.
Hi.
Carrie.
Okay, two resolutions. We that we introduced the other night, last week. Mission fees. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Anthony.
Hi.
That's the lady. Um, Brett.
Hi.
Harris.
Hi.
Nancy.
Hi.
Morris. Roni.
Hi.
Sauer.
Hi.
Wallace.
Hi.
President Pedro.
Hi.
Carrie.
Um. Um, the next resolution authorizes a vendor contract with Columbia County Recovery Kitchen to supply meals to the youth center. A roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Anthony.
Hi.
That's the lady. Hi. Brett.
Hi.
Harris.
Hi.
Nancy.
Hi.
Morris.
Hi.
Roni.
Hi.
Sauer.
Hi.
Wallace.
Hi.
President Pedro.
Hi.
Carrie.
And the last, of last week's resolutions authorize the mayor to execute a contract with the time and haze. For a feasibility study pedestrian path, path along Paddock Place, a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Anthony.
Hi.
That's the lady. Hi. Brett.
Hi.
Hi.
Nancy.
Hi.
Morris.
Hi.
Roni.
Hi.
Sauer.
Hi.
Wallace.
Hi.
President Pedro.
Hi.
Carrie.
Okay. The next resolution authorizes the mayor to execute a sales tax agreement with the county, the county of Columbia. Can I have an introduction in a second, please? Juan, second.
Oh.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay.
Could Heather explain this?
I have Heather, and that's why we have the distinguished guest Andrew Howard here tonight. Um, you wanna give a quick summary?
Yeah, so the background is the city and the county have traditionally had, uh, an agreement in place that now needs to be renewed for the sharing of sales tax revenue. What this agreement does is it takes the portion, the city's portion of assessed real property valuation as compared to the county. And that would be the share that you would receive from all sales tax and use taxes collected throughout the county. Um, yeah, in terms of where that figure has been historically, in twenty twenty one, it was point seven nine, twenty twenty two, it was point eight zero. The, um, figure being used in the agreement is point eight four. The idea being that that's been the traditional figure that's been used, it's been a little bit higher than probably the exact percentage. But it also deals with any fluctuations that happen on a year to year basis, okay? Um, if the city, because I think this would be the logical question, if the city were to not be a part of this agreement. And wanted to exercise its right to preemption to collect sales tax itself. What it would, um, what would happen is it would lose the ability to share countywide. The four percent share that it would receive here within the city, two percent would go to the county, two percent would stay here. And the big thing would be county services that are otherwise now provided for because it's part of a global tax. The county would go back and start directly billing the city for the services provided to city residents. And so that is why councils prior to you have made the decision, I think wisely, to say, no, if you want to be part of the larger pie. And we want to see, you know, uh, the revenues distributed accordingly.
Is there any information on how much of the sales tax countywide is actually generated by the city?
Um, I don't have those numbers.
But that to me is the bottom line.
And people, in the past, some have tried to figure that out, it's a very difficult calculation.
Yeah.
Uh, Heather, you wanna add it? I asked Heather to come also to. She has her end up, Heather. Do you want to contribute to this?
Hi, yes, uh, yes, um, I'm sorry, uh, from my end, the whole meeting video is very choppy, it's very hard to hear all of you. I'm hoping that maybe going from my direction to you is clearer, um, please let me know if it's not. Um, everything that Andy said is correct. Um, to Margaret's question, which I heard most of, um, we have tried to get that information multiple times. The problem is that there are major chains and things like CVS, for example, that only report at a higher level. So there's no way to break out, for example, what the sales tax that the CVS on Warren Street generates versus the CVS in, uh, zip code one, two, five, three, four as a whole. Um. I, we have looked at this multiple times, and by we, I mean, people before me and me as well. Um, there's really no good way of judging it. I, my personal belief, based on, you know, just trends and things, is that, um, we may have been better off preempting maybe twenty years ago. But I don't think that we would necessarily now because so much development has happened in places in Columbia County outside of Hudson. Specifically Greenport with, you know, um, Lowe's and, and all those big complexes. Uh, the second thing that I would also like to point out is that, um, normally, the way that the sales tax is distributed is based solely on, um, the census. Uh, there has been an agreement in place, and this agreement continues that agreement in that while the county technically is allowed to retain seventy percent and has to issue thirty percent. They actually take a small percentage of their seventy percent. And dedicate it specifically to the city of Hudson, and that is based on the historical fact that Hudson was, you know, an economic generator. That is greater, obviously, than our relatively small population. I mean, if you look at Velasia and their population versus what they generate economically versus Hudson, you can see the variation there. So this continues that, uh, which I obviously think is good. And I would, um, reiterate Andy's point of view that I think that this is a, uh, a good thing for Hudson and something that we should consider.
So Heather, two questions, um, Andy was describing this as county based, you're describing it as zip code one, two, five, three, four, which is not the same thing, right?
I think, I think.
It's the same thing?
No, the, the county has more than one zip code. What, my only issue, my only point with the zip code thing was to say that it is very difficult to determine within Hudson alone. Let alone within the county as a whole, how the sales tax is generated because the state doesn't collect it at this level, or if they do, they do not share that level of information with the city of Hudson. And we have requested it and been told that it is not information that we can get. So the zip code thing was merely to state that trying to identify the dollar amount of sales tax generated within the city of Hudson alone is challenging for a number of factors. One being the fact that we share a zip code with multiple other municipalities within the county, but not the county as a whole.
Right, and then the other question, I understood, Andy, that you were saying that the apportionment was based upon valuation, not, not census.
There's two, there's actually, the percentage they use is the, um, percentage of the real property valuation of the city of Hudson, vis a vis the county. And then to Heather's point, I did overlook that, there is a portion which recognizes the population based on the last census of the city of Hudson.
So it's an algorithm that figures both factors.
Exactly, in the, at the back of the agreement, you'll see the formula, that's where the nine point five percent comes, that's where the population piece for Hudson is there. Which is helpful because again, as population changes, you are sure that you're getting that representation.
And what's the duration of this agreement?
This agreement would continue forward unless you or future councils decided to terminate it on six months notice. And you'd want that time anyway, because you'd have a lot of.
So it continued, that doesn't have an ending.
It automatically begins.
Yeah, so why do we have to do it now?
Because it had previously inspired.
But, but you're, you're saying it will.
This, this one will.
I got you, okay, got you, okay. Thank you.
All right, okay, let's have a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Anthony.
Hi.
That's the lady. Hi. Brett.
Hi.
Harris.
Hi.
Nancy.
Hi.
Morris.
Hi.
Roni.
Hi.
Sauer.
Hi.
Wallace.
Hi.
President Pedro.
Hi.
Carrie.
Um. Mr. Howard, your word dismissed.
Thanks. I appreciate it.
Heather, thank you very much.
Yeah.
Um. Okay, next resolution, uh, city of Hudson, by the Department of Suicide Check from Sherry and Michael Nero, the amount of one hundred dollars. Can I have an introduction a second, please? Margaret and Juan. Any questions? I want to vote, please.
Councilmember Anthony.
Hi.
That's the lady. I'm Brett.
Hi.
Harris.
Hi.
Nancy.
Hi.
Morris.
Hi.
Roni.
Hi.
Sauer.
Hi.
Wallace.
Hi.
President Pedro.
Hi.
Carrie.
The next resolution authorizes a budget transfer to the police department. Uh, as Margaret, if you might recall, during the B E A, um, our chief said they need to be able to use some of their existing funds for a new car. This is what this resolution addresses. Can I have an introduction in a second, first, please? Juan, second. Margaret, questions?
Yes, so, um, I just find this okay. So I, I've brought this up before, and I do remember this discussion, and I do remember that, uh, the police department is in need of another vehicle. Um. I'm hoping that going forward, as we put in place monthly reports that actually track expenditures and particular line items in the budget, uh, that we, moving things from like to like is one thing. But I really have a problem if we have fifty eight thousand dollar, uh, balance in personal services. We obviously over budgeted in personal services, uh, so that should, you know, to keep track of, sorry. To keep track of this, throughout, you're in a budget framework, um, we should not be budgeting that much in personal services. If we end up with fifty eight thousand left over, that's, we now have available to put to an entirely different purpose, which in this particular case is needed. So that's, you know, I think we need to do a better job of keeping track of finances and clean lines. Where we budget appropriately for personal services, labor, whatever, and appropriately for equipment. And, and that we, we did less sloppy about moving things around from non light to non light. But in this particular instance, I am aware of this issue, so I just want to raise that as a point that I made, um, I made in the B E A discussion, actually.
Okay, you know, I agree with that, um, moving right along. Heather.
David.
Heather?
Is, is this because of hiring new officers that maybe the overtime wasn't utilized?
Because I think the chief is, is the chief on the console?
That's true.
Chief Brian Clark, can you explain where this, uh, fifty eight thousand came from?
Hi there, can everybody hear me?
Yeah.
Yep. Hi. So, part of it is, um, from lack of hiring. We did have budgeted for another officer. This year, however, we weren't able to hire that officer. And additionally, uh, we haven't utilized as much in overtime as we recently have in the past.
Thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome.
There's your answer.
So, Margaret, for your answer, I, I, I see what you're saying, but I think in this situation, it was due to, due to because of, you know, the officer that wasn't hired, which is still on the books, probably gonna be still budgeted somewhere. And the overtime, which is never something, you know, you, you always want to have there, but you, you know, you don't necessarily have to use it.
I understand, I understand that.
Yeah, but I get what you're saying.
My point is that if you're looking at line items on a budget.
Sure.
And you budgeted a hundred dollars this year for something, and you ended up for one reason or another, only utilizing seventy five. Next year, when you're looking at it, you think, well, yeah, actually, last year we only needed seventy five. So do we really need to budget a hundred and ten this time, or we, is that twenty five we didn't use? Something that, you know what, now we're gonna have to use that because we aren't able to. But I think if you don't have clean lines, you can't really do a proposed budget very efficiently for future. That's my only point, and this whole discussion I'm very familiar with, is a rough meeting. So I, I don't have any question about this particular transfer.
Yeah, I think, I think the, the point is that if the, the money remains in the general fund, it makes, gives the city more flexibility in spending in the future. I think that's what you're trying to say, so it's not that we wouldn't uh, portion it for the, the, the police department if they needed it, it just gives us more flexibility on there.
But, but also, if I own, if I aim, if I was fifty eight thousand shy of what I thought I was gonna spend, then that should inform the budget I'm proposing for the future for my personal start, because, right? That's how you keep track, and that's, that's my only.
And we have a couple more that we're coming up. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Anthony.
Hi.
That's the lady. Hi. Brett.
Hi.
Harris.
Hi.
Nancy.
Hi.
Morris.
Hi.
Roni.
Hi.
Sauer.
Hi.
Wallace.
Hi.
President Pedro.
Hi.
Carrie.
The next resolution is some more dirty line items. That what we told them?
Uh, can I have an introduction in a second, please?
Margaret and Juan. Well, we know, um, same thing, I've changed here. Uh, but let's have a roll call vote.
Councilmember Anthony.
Hi.
That's the lady.
Hi.
Brett.
Hi.
Harris.
Hi.
Nancy.
Hi.
Morris.
Hi.
Roni.
Hi.
Sauer.
Hi.
Wallace.
Hi.
President Pedro.
Hi.
Carrie.
Can I just make a comment on this one? Um, if I'm not mistaken, the water from water pump balance to water treatment, water transmission, this is a light device. This is not the same thing. This, the, the ones above.
Oh, right, because it comes from the front desk.
Which are relatively small power amounts, are personal services and sanitary too, materials, etc. The big dollar item, which is.
The big dollar item, which is waterfront balance, is actually being used in the water system completely. So the big dollar item, this is a light, a light scenario. Not the same thing.
The next resolution. Uh, provides for uh, the collection past due amounts built for the operation of sewerage services within the city of Hudson. And such past due amounts for water rents and arrears be applied to the taxes. You took the taxes. This is for people who haven't paid their water and sewer and get applied for the tax to their annual tax. Can I have an introduction in a second, please? Dewan and Margaret. Any questions?
How much is the total?
Is there a total? No. Any of us on here? I won't point it out if you are. Okay, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Anthony. That's Saludi. Hi, Frank.
Hi.
Harris.
Hi.
Maranti. Morris. Roney. Sauer. Wallace.
Hi.
Presidente Pedro.
Hi.
Carrie.
Okay, the next resolution authorizes a budget amendment and alone to repair the HVAC system in central firehouse. Introduction, second please. Dewan. Vicki. Any questions?
You should have said replace on the top to replace and not repair. Because we're really replacing the same system for again. It doesn't matter.
Yeah, I don't think that.
I, I wonder how all the business system. Which is, how many years? A thousand four, two thousand five ish.
So there's no warranty or anything.
We had a fire.
Is this? Did you, did we discuss, is insurance involved, Michael?
Yeah, it's, it's in the resolution. Most of it is covered by insurance.
Oh, okay. Very well. I will, I will, please.
Councilmember Anthony. That's Saludi. Hi, Frank.
Hi.
Harris. Maranti. Morris. Roney.
Hi.
Sauer. Wallace.
Hi.
Presidente Pedro. Carrie.
Uh, the next resolution, which you'll be familiar with, is finally selling the property at four fourteen State Street. As you recall, we had some discussion about it. We uh, they agreed, the uh, property owners agreed to the ten thousand dollar fee. Can I have an introduction in a second? Dewan, Margaret, any questions? A roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Anthony. That's Saludi. Hi, Frank.
Hi.
Harris.
Hi.
Maranti. Morris. Roney. Sauer. Wallace.
Hi.
Presidente Pedro.
Hi.
Carrie.
You're done, Dirk. That quiet man in the corner. Yeah, the person about it, yes. Oh, okay. Okay, the next resolution amends the youth center fee schedule. A introduction in a second, please. Margaret and Dewan. Question?
What was before?
Yeah, it's a good question.
I think it was fifty dollars for the day.
Yeah, I thought so. So that's good. Make more money.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Anthony. That's Saludi. Hi, Frank.
Hi.
Harris.
Hi.
Maranti. Morris. Roney. Sauer. Wallace.
Hi.
Presidente Pedro. Carrie.
And the last resolution accepts Berkshire, Berkshire Ticonix grant for an internship program at the youth center. An introduction. And Dewan and Margaret. Any questions? Come on in.
So this is going to be paid internship, so I'm assuming that it's going to have to, whoever the individual is going to do the fingerprinting background, correct?
I assume so. It's, it seems to have all the.
criteria.
Yeah. A roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Anthony. That's Saludi. Hi, Frank.
Hi.
Harris.
Hi.
Maranti. Morris. Roney. Sauer. Wallace.
Hi, sorry, it was on mute.
Presidente Pedro. Carrie.
Okay, moving to laws. We're voting. Are there all revision?
The first one is a revision.
Oh, okay. So we're just introducing them? Can I have an introduction in a second to the uh, law about alcoholic beverages? Margaret, in a second. Okay. Next is the vote to vote up filming.
Are we voting on these or not?
Okay, because it was amended.
Oh, got it. Okay.
Um, can I have an introduction in a second on, on the local law about filming? Dewan and Vicki. And then we have a revise. Law about um, the alarms. Introduction in a second. Margaret and Dewan. And that's it, guys.
So before we, are we going to know that we are, one next one, Frank? So it, it has been revised and I did work with Michael and with um, for some of this as part of the legal committee. I just want to put it out there that um, as you know, Michael, I'm not a fan of the thirty seventh street park. But that is a throughway as opposed to the other locations which are um, destinations. I don't know whether we should consider, I was hoping we could have a discussion of it because there may be some need to do additional revisions. The problem with Seventh Street Park is that people just going about their business are going to have to walk around or, you know, kind of get to the hospital, ride around, whatever. As opposed to Promenade or the waterfront where you go there to do, to go to an event. Seventh Street, I think, is a little bit palatable. I did have concerns about including that. We, we worked on cleaning it up and making it all consistent. But I think that is something that I was hoping the full council would discuss. Um, I also have concerns about including streets in this. Um, again, these are, you know, public highways as opposed to a venue that you are going to. Um, to go to an event. Um, and so those are a lot of streets. So those are, those are two concerns that I have in this and I was just really hoping that uh, before it's voted on, we can have some kind of conversation around that because I think those are, are best.
I'd like to add something, but. Yeah?
Yeah, sure.
So um, I have to say about, I find that it's a little bit insensitive for the city to have um, uh, functions on the Seventh Street Park. Uh, since there is mental illness, there is addiction. And um, I just feel like how we have the function of alcoholics with the regular uh, you know, alcoholics, I don't know. I, I just don't think it's a very wise thing for us to do. Uh, and it's also hard to monitor um, the alcohol for police, who is part of the group and who's not. It's just not fair for those folks at all.
So one problem that you proposed, Eric.
Uh, well, I guess we could send it back to uh, the legal committee to work on further.
I was kind of hoping to get input from the council to see, is I have, Miss Givens.
I, I kind of agree with what you say, especially with now Tom Popps is doing a lot of work on, it's going to be a destination for people to come through. I, I think what, what Margaret's saying is probably a good idea to I mean, because it's really limited and again, to be excluded or not excluded. Um, but I think it's important to keep it up, uh, keep it off, off the schedule for it. Have we discussed it with Pops?
No, we have, we have not discussed it with Pops. All, all we did was, this thing came up. There was, it had, we got a partial piece of the code that was revised. Then from Mike and I sat down with the whole code. It, it wasn't the revisions that had created the inconsistencies, the old code is all top problems. And so we worked through the whole thing to clean it up and make it consistent. And we worked with Crystal to come up with, okay, given that this is the intent of it to do X, Y, and Z. This is cleanly how we would do that. But I have questions about, you know, you know, I was really just doing what Mike and Crystal. I just have questions about the wisdom of including Seventh Street and all.
Just thinking maybe in our, we could add that to our um, next legal community and, and my stakeholders.
Okay, that's a good idea.
Rather than.
So maybe have Pops or who else would you suggest?
I think Pops is a great one because they're.
They, yeah, they're monitoring the park.
It's not necessarily the Seventh Street Parks, since it is the public square and public square extends beyond.
Yeah.
I'd agree with you about the streets though, because then you, then you sort of don't allow block parties.
Yeah, I mean, a lot of parties. Part of it is that.
So even if you, even taking alcohol off the table altogether. The event that we used to have in Lothar, the, the street food party, remember that? That's the same principle, right? I, I get that. That's okay.
Okay, so we.
We can just do all some of the responsibility of policing it because that's.
It was taking out.
Right, I mean, the, the.
Alcohol and drinks and all.
Exactly.
It's all. Some of it is very, very.
The street thing is part of me.
So, yeah, I think that's something we should discuss.
The square to me, like people walk diagonally through it to get from A to B.
I do serious.
Yeah.
The safety, public safety. Yeah.
So we're sending it back to uh.
The legal and we will invite Pops and, and anybody else, anybody can take that.
So we have a motion to lay it on our desk, so we're going to have the.
Can I have a motion to table?
Yes.
The uh, second. All those favorites sitting by for saying aye. Everyone holds. Okay, that's our official business. Margaret, I want to address some of the things you talked about in the um, budget hearing. Um, I agree with you wholeheartedly about all that. Uh, I just want to say historically, the budget process has been um, well, the opposite of transparent, very non-transparent, as you may or may not know. Um, the fact that, you know, as Vicki pointed out, you were all able to come to the meetings was great. Um, Heather has always offered to all council members you to answer questions about the budget one-on-one, if that's what you need. The problem with having meetings after five on the budget uh, was partly a member of the BDA who couldn't make it after five was busy, you know, with whatever. So um, that was the reason it was held, they're held in the afternoon. Uh, what was your lead?
No, I think that, that holding them in the afternoon is probably reasonable. My, my only.
Oh, right, you want to.
My only thing is, uh, what I would really like to see is, you know, the work that the BDA does, that it takes weeks. It's a huge amount of work. What I would really like to see is a twenty minute presentation from the BDA to the council saying, okay, this is what it is. Here are the high level things. Here's some big ticket items. There's one item in particular from the police department upgrading a system that, that was not approved because the money wasn't there this year. But it was like, here's some high level things that we were not able to approve. Uh, here's where revenue went down. Uh, here's some things, just a twenty minute thing because the council can go to those meetings.
Yeah.
And that way, if we just had an overview, then folks would know what are the elements in this, that's all.
Yeah, and I think, I think it's a favorite to the public, you know.
As well, exactly.
Yeah, because many um, publics may not be able to handle the data.
And I wouldn't possibly interpret this document if I hadn't been to the meetings.
Well, that's true. And, you know, that's been a a point I've been making over the years since I've been involved, that the document the document follows a form that Heather has to submit to the state.
Right.
That form does not really reveal much about details. I've always pointed out that if you look at the city of Kingston, you can see a document that shows you how every penny is spent. That would require a lot more time from the, from the treasurer's office. Um, you know, so.
I'm suggesting something very simple.
Yeah. Certainly not against it. It's a great idea.
Um, yes, sir. So I, I know this year you had issues with the, the radio, but I found that was very helpful in the past. I mean, we really um, allowed myself and others to participate, you know, because we don't, we don't suspect any way for conversation, but it's good to hear. But, I mean, moving forward, is there any way of doing it via Zoom, um, you know, so others can participate that way? Because, I mean, that, that just, you know, allows a little bit more.
Well, we did do that during the pandemic.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
Just a question of, you know, managing the Zoom.
Um, well, Michael does enough. We can, we can find something else. Michael, he's sleepwalking.
We'll figure it out. That's unfunny. So, any new business? Crystal, we haven't heard work from you all night. You got anything to add?
Not tonight. That's actually a good thing. That means that there's no problems to solve.
Exactly.
Okay, anybody else have anything to raise? The public. Anybody in the public? Dewan, do you hear something you want to say?
It was way too close. What's a good journey?
They're going to second. Oh, lots of seconds. All those, I was saying, uh, anyone opposed? This meeting's over. Thank you all for attending.